Ready to move meeting to work?
It's a clock.
All in the meeting to work. Minutes of the last meeting.
We do the removal. Meeting policy. The selectmen have already voted. For their meetings. But this policy.
Turn off the pause. I was just gonna ask, has there been any other boards that have been adopted or approved this policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, the select board asked for it. It came pretty restricted for the select board because they didn't want them covered for remote participation. It was wanted to restrict it as much as possible, but with this board, Mark worked away. And so that would help her to participate, but then if you just didn't feel like driving from Rebecca's straight over here, it would also sign you that a little bit. So.
I was away around, sorry. I just couldn't. Thank you.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the town of Norwich while planning for a remote meeting and participation policy.
Ready?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Give an answer discussion.
Is there any discussion? It's pretty. All in favor? Even?
He doesn't vote.
He said 20 questions.
Sorry.
Just number. The five.
You know, when you get old, you can remember things.
You keep saying that. I think I'm doing pretty good for being a lot older than you are.
Oh, we used to what, 30, 29?
Absolutely. At least. Okay. So this is basically all we have.
This is bigger one. Is it?
I can present it all to you. I've got more stuff.
Okay.
You ready?
Well, that's the next thing on the agenda.
I just made bigger stuff than you could print itself.
You're all trying to unveil a little hill.
There's no, yeah, it's all existed now. It's hardly any total change. Right, within a couple hundred feet of the road, so there's not much of a total change. I was gonna do all the soils for the subjects. And this is soil survey. So, you ran you bought this from the bishops. And they it's 10 acres. We took the first three and a half acres out to mortgage, so we so that they're one outlaw. They can't do anything else without your approval. But two acre lot at the end, they offered to the neighbors, but they eventually said they didn't want to buy it. So it's a can't tell you look at it, three month subdivision or or a lot with that outlaw, but it's going through mortgage process. That's enough to manage by mortgage. And Bob Gilchrist is in process of moving all those soils for our next meeting. I don't think there's enough total change to bother with any kind of total change.
All right, so.
It's down to base of the work.
Yeah, just it's right on top of it, just before lunch drive.
Okay.
You know where that is.
So we're not considering this one acre, I mean this one.
That's a first outlaw. Even if it's a mortgage, it counts as an outlaw. So that gives them two pieces, three lots to the left are what they're subdivide. They're keeping that one law. They couldn't wait three months to finance this thing, so they're on that one law. The other three lots are free and clear, so once you guys have done it, do whatever they want.
All right, so three lots makes a subdivision, right?
Yes. If they even divided into, they were the rest of it, keep that piece. They just bought it, so they're not homestead exemption. Right. They could divide it in half, or they have to come here. Or one every five years. Yeah, I don't know. Does the town see the deed yet? No, well, booking pageant is passing, okay. You have a big consultor, that's an English.
Are there any restrictions or anything on the deed or anything like that?
No.
What happened?
Everything's over two acres.
You haven't made out an application?
I was told there wasn't any pro permanent area sketch plan.
Oh. That's what we're doing.
We're doing this what we did the last time, but we're repeating again. Just a really basic mile highs, look at the property.
Now, that's mixed up.
This one says, that's another issue.
That's what, I don't know if you involve Gilchrist, he's local. He's doing
This one, all you need.
Next meeting, not his report and where they are located on the lots. There's no strings, don't nothing, no. No, no. Not anywhere near.
All right, on did you get one of each of those Richard just said that these are the only ones that we have to consider for his plan right here. First one.
If you can make it on the way there, all right.
Yeah.
Two different documents.
Thank you.
His plan we do submitted at least 14 days before the regular meeting.
Yes, it was.
Check out boxes, right?
And sketch plan is pretty basic proposed layout of lots, roads, building, and other features. Oh, simple, the subdivision, you're gonna say.
Yeah, it is.
Or I won't be here.
Right.
I'm trying to retire, and I'm like, what is being copy of the tax map, the site and surrounding area.
Two nights ago, I got a, I've been out of the office 10 years in January. I got a phone call two nights ago asking me about mobile registration.
Scott, the wetland map is showing a wetland. When you go part of lot one and lot two.
I walked it in, nothing but.
A map is a wetland.
They're building that close to the road, we can do buffer zone on lot one and two.
Wetland's about 345 feet wide. By
I'll go out there.
140 feet from the back of a lot. And then it runs way down and behind into the neighbors.
Yeah, I thought that was over the hill way down. So let's go there. What I think. I'll scan it in and put it on the map, and they'll use that as a buffer zone.
Okay.
They're not gonna build close to that.
Okay.
How far from a wetland to the half, like, is there a fill, how far do I got?
I don't think you just can't be in.
A real stream or something, there just can't be any.
Yes, a stream, a map stream is 75 feet.
All right, so. We don't have.
We have a copy of the tax.
Yes, that's.
Yeah. Richard said.
Tax map is here.
Oh, okay.
Which is what we kind of just looked at there, just on digital version.
Yeah.
We put that there. I bet the soils man.
Is that the top graphic?
Top graph, not that soil management.
I pressed more than top of that picture.
Um. All right.
You can pick them.
Well, I didn't get it set. Um, so we have most of those, right? Yeah. I will make a motion.
Yep. Well, soil survey, that's coming, right?
That's one where you can just.
But at the next point, guy who designed sub-its, this one's where.
Okay, well.
Excuse me.
I.
I'm one of those the only one I can ask some questions about all of this, too, please, because I'm the adjoining property. I don't want to interrupt, but I don't want to be left out either.
Okay, I think we need to have a motion and a second, and then do the rest of the discussion.
Well, I I'm gonna ask to waive the total thing, this one, not ones to put through there. Use the 10 foot contour as on USGS, just to see come on through the whole lot.
So you're gonna use a 10 foot interval?
Well, that's one. USGS is, I would just scan it in and play it with the top. Doesn't make sense to me. Whatever you guys want.
So your recommendation is going to move to set 10 feet as contour.
Or just wave it. I don't think it's needed.
Yeah, they have to.
Okay.
Yeah. 10 foot is standard.
Yes. I mean, faces where there's big hills, sometimes they.
Motion to what?
Use 10 feet as the contour interval.
Yeah.
All right, I just made a motion to use 10 feet as a contour interval. If somebody want a seconded.
Seconded, you are required to say.
All in favor?
Um, ask for a
Discussion.
Discussion.
Is it up for discussion? Sure. Doing all this, I have the adjoining property. That three acre piece right beside mine, that's up against mine. Obviously, this year we're under oath. So it's very, it's nice and dry right now. Normally, it's fairly wet. The property right now is from the road down to the property is probably five or six feet from when they built the road up a few years ago. There are two culverts that come in to take drainage from up on Big Little Hill that dump onto that property. Are they gonna be able to divert that? Because if they divert it, it's gonna flood my property. Because there's two, there's two culverts, three, on that three acre piece that take the drainage from coming up on the hill.
They're not dished, they just empty out the property.
Correct.
They've laid the verdict, they have to get an even off to Murray's.
Well, I would think they'd be aware of this, because they're buying the property, no one's there. I mean, there's, one culvert's three feet across. And then which is just over the property line, probably maybe 50 feet. And then where it is that piece of property, the property line, it curves a little bit, and there's another smaller culvert that comes down. They both dump onto that three acre piece of property. So if they go, if they go fill, you know, they can't just block off the culverts, because that creates a whole different issue. So then they have to, they're gonna divert that water somewhere. And I don't want my property flooded out because they diverted it. So, I mean, what are they allowed to do and not allowed to do, is a question.
Well, we can put all that on the point, and I'll take a look at it. And this is a pretty much.
This, but I look at it, I mean, right now, it's been a very, very dry year.
Yeah.
But we had long enough water levels, we know when you walk across that property, most of it's wet. But if you haul in enough fill to bring it up to road height, obviously, you get above the water level. But that water's gonna go somewhere.
And you kind of have your number, and you show it to me, and I'll
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Is the dishing along the road there when that comes out?
It's not, the downs, the downhill side, they just, when anyone came through and redid the road a few years ago, they raised the level of the road up, so now, when you stand I mean, road ice now, like here. And the culvert is a ditch on the opposite side of the road to catch the water. And then it comes to that culvert, and it just dumps out onto the property. Because the culvert is actually still higher than the property. So that's my concern.
I'm sure they would, you know, make sure we could.
Do, do the other properties have the same thing on there, like down, across the course?
The first one, the other lots, well, excuse me, the, if I'm correct, they have the three acre lot, and the two acre lot, the next lot is the one that the trailer's on, is that correct?
No, the trailer was on the three acre lot. I was told.
So he's on the first lot?
Yes.
Okay. That's.
Well, this is only the permanent area sketch plan, I haven't surveyed those yet.
Okay. I mean, based on, because I got, I got the mailing from the, from the town as far as the acreage and stuff like that. So I went and basically kind of paced off.
Yeah.
Because there's no markers or anything out there for a survey. And approximated what I thought, and I, my assumption was that the trailer that's existing there now is on the next lot.
Well, we'll walk it together.
True.
Before we come to the next plan.
But just like a certain interest, I don't want my lot to get flooded out.
We'll, we'll address it with, you may and the homeowner would need better to come here. There's discussions.
Um, is a part of the subdivision, the building will have to be included into the sketch before anything is staged.
Next.
That would be, but just in my preliminary review, just using the GIS and the satellite that we have, you can see the opening down here. So it does look like it's not on that three acre parcel.
Right. Because looking at the map.
Looks too far down.
Yeah.
Just looking at the map, the way it looks to me is it's split somewhere around here.
Right.
Yes.
So the trailer is here. So this lot here, this is, I own this.
Yeah.
So right here, there's a culvert about here, and there's another one right about here, and they both just dump onto that property.
There's no dishing on the other side of the road, you know?
On the uphill side of the road, it's already just.
Over a vote on the motion for the time, ten foot contour, and so accepted. All in favor?
Okay.
All right, can I do?
We haven't approved it yet here. Uh, I make a motion that the preliminary sketch plan is complete.
Sir.
Is it special? All in favor?
Now you can leave.
Scott, will you be ready for the September meeting?
Yes.
For September 9?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll pop you on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
And all that green issues should be in September 9?
Yes. Yeah, you'll have a chance to bounce back and ask for revisions or whatnot, too.
This year's a very good year to judge weapons, you know?
The depth, parts of the, we've talked with that, the rare that are so, where that wasn't.
Where it is.
One of the things that's so amazing about names, you can be hiking a mountain, be up to 1400 feet, and then you're up.
Okay. Are we doing
Yes, so with the last meeting, the notice for the preliminary sketch review was short. The applicant reviewed the meeting itself, the ordinance itself, saw the oversight, and did not want question to his application when it was approved. Which, right from the get-go, it would have done. And so he asked if he could appear on the agenda again tonight, so we could restart his shot clock. Had it in plenty of time now, so we had a preliminary sketch review with him, the nominal feedback, I would say. But then we, I sent the talk of the agenda and the map to immediate the butters, only the ordinance as required, but we were getting a lot of comments about it. We wanted to get it, get it right. We didn't want to go through the process, the whole process, and then have a subject review, so we are here again.
All right, so if you are in, we only have to answer these questions, right?
Yes.
Wait, so which questions are we, now, on the, on the
So you're on, I just wanted the application completion right now.
So that's something.
Just the first, uh, five questions.
The one that has application completion, and the other one is performance limits.
I got to. That's why. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Well, you need to, um, oops, please remove that back.
Can you just take us through your application once again?
Yeah.
Thank you for adding the numbers and
Of course.
Everything's awesome. All right, so a few very slight changes from last meeting, and thanks for having me take up some more time tonight and looking at this again. So the total acreage is 138 acres. We will be selling one parcel to a butter. It's about 15 acres, and then that leaves the large acre, acre jump back, it's about 94 acres. That will be divided once we purchase the property a little over a week from now. So that leaves about 30 acres, and we'll divide that into seven lots, lot sizes. I think they range from three to six acres. Each been soil tested. Yeah, so the lot paint on the sketch plan that is not gonna be there any longer. That line that has is gonna be moved a little bit, and it's gonna run all the way up to the top of the property. So that's the change. So just one less lot.
A lot of these ones is.
Exactly, yeah, that'll be, that would some, back acreage will be sold to a butter. Yeah. And overall, there's no opposing any infrastructure building, just the idea would be to have the approval and then resell the lots as vacant and residential, single-family residential.
Yes. On the notice, it says covenants will be placed on the lots to protect. Do we know what those are, or do you have those?
Um, I'm still working out a few, but there's, I think there's five or six. The idea is just to maintain the area looking the way it is currently as much as possible, it'll be buffer along the road. We're not clearing the wet vegetation, it won't be mobile homes allowing the property. You know, no junk trash debris, just no vehicles, no storage containers. Campers can be, you know, used from May through November. Just trying to keep the neighborhood the same way that it's looking.
So first, if it's, so if a person purchases one of the lots, though, are those, those covenants still with this, even if they choose one of the lots?
So the lots within the subdivision, those covenants will be on the deed.
Yeah.
So that is not right now. We don't have to worry about Turner Brook.
Correct, Turner Brook will not be on any lot in the subdivision.
That'll be part of the lots that are being sold to a new mother.
That's correct.
Okay.
So the second line on the checklist, so it says, you know, proposed layouts of lots, road buildings, and other features, so covenants, would that be other features that, that falls into that, or?
Uh, no, not even, I mean, that's kind of preliminary, they're honestly putting that out there. But we did have discussion about that. Businesses, mobile homes, impact on neighborhood values, and some, kind of some of the talking points that we had in one-on-one the last time, too. Discuss.
Yeah.
The concerns, you know, you're going from a rural ground or road. Would, you know, again, understanding of that, so. So those are all things that, once you get into the preliminary, to the preliminary process. So those are all things that once you get into the preliminary, uh, to this preliminary process after this, that kind of back and forth, like we really want to see this, it's going to hard neighbor, neighborhood values, things like that, so. You have to pre-apply that.
So this was committed on?
Yes.
No, so I guess the reason why I bring it up, so what I give, so this is for a preliminary, uh, so this is for a, a, a sketch, the sketch, right, the sketch. So I guess where I'm, where I'm at is just, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if somebody buys a piece of land and they can't cut a tree, I'm not sure that's where we want it to be, so I'm just like, do we even want to bother with the sketch plan? If, if that's what your covenants are going to be, I don't, you know, I don't, I wouldn't put that because that's just, I'm saying, I'd say another, other protective covenants, meaning no mobile homes or unregistered vehicles or fifteen hundred square foot homes and things like that. But what someone can and can't do on their land, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just, for my personal, I'm not, I don't, I don't believe that's, that's appropriate. I don't know if we need to start.
But if he elects to do it himself and the town's not requiring something like that, that would be different. He owns the property, he's deciding what he's going to do, what he's going to do with land on the road. You're going to get into a more philosophical debate maybe amongst, or if the board says what we really like to see, this buffer on that property in order into that D as opposed to the actual landowner saying, this is what I'm going to do to protect the property, whether there, he's going to buy lot three and one and two, and he's just going to protect himself.
I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean? If you start ordering him to say you can't cut trees on the property, you need to protect the covenants. You're going to find.
No, no, it's, it's definitely around.
Right. You don't want to order it.
No, I'm, I'm just sort of saying this, and I, but I don't think anybody should go over it. If I want to buy, if I want to buy a new property, I want to, I want to cut a tree down. I'm not wanting, you know, again, to me, there's a difference, I'm cutting a tree down and, and, well, totally, totally understand.
So the covenants are purely voluntary by myself.
What does that mean?
I'm electing to put these covenants in the D. That's, that's above and beyond what the subdivision ordinance or man use ordinance or any ordinance in town has.
Yeah.
So it's like, you know, a more restrictive measure, like how you follow the state guideline, the town can be stricter. I'm just kind of going beyond that.
Um, my understanding, let's say somebody buys the property with those covenants on it and then turn around and sell the property, they, they're not required to continue those covenants?
The covenants are in the D and not run with the land, so any future transfer, the same one will happen.
Well, it would be pretty strict.
I, I mean, I can remove the covenants. Why? It feels, it benefits me knowing that the person who's going to buy this piece of land is going to, you know, build a nice visually appealing house and add value to the neighborhood. Not by cutting a strip of trees along the road and putting them all home or living in the camper. So these are kind of what I'm envisioning, what I'm trying to avoid, so the covenants are right for me to kind of.
Set. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we the sketch plan review of Main Woods and Waters LLP. Um, that's being completed.
This is complete, that's not a factor, this is a new set, lot eight is no longer required.
This is there, this is the sketch plan review. It's not even preliminary.
Okay.
The next one's going to be preliminary.
Catch, okay.
Yeah.
Second.
Make sure that everything is set in stone for next time.
Yeah, is there a discussion? Is there anybody who would like that?
Is this a public comment period or?
Yes.
Yeah, so I've just got one thing, um, in the neighborhood there. My concern is the road itself, you know, it's not a developed road, it's a sixty-five-year-old gravel road. One concern I would have is the investment the town's going to have to put into that. You know, in a eight or ten new families back and forth on that road every day, dust control, calcium and all of that stuff. So just the expense that town might incur upgrading that road would be a concern.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Uh, my, one of my major concerns, I'm right on the corner lot at twenty-four Ridge Bar Road. I know this time of year typically for me, my well, like I have to watch it really close, it starts sucking up sediment, sediment and whatnot. So I'm afraid that if we start adding all these houses in there, you know, my well, I don't know what's going to happen to it. If I have to re-drill or whatnot, but right now it maintains, I've been there for ten years and I just monitor it during the summer. Couple of times I've had to pull it up ten feet just because it started sucking sediment, so that's one of my major concerns and then again, the road. Now what happens to that if that becomes a subdivision? And then it turns to commercial property on the other side of the road, what happens to that whole? Whole road? So the road itself in terms of the maintenance, it's a consideration that the town has to maintain. We, we could explore the property effort in terms of upgrades or whatnot. The water levels is something that will be specifically addressed in the application, either from a hydrologist or qualified well driller. And then the property across the road presently held by the same party, but won't be. And so we can't hold that against prospective buyer over here. Uh, but I've been assured that that property in question about residential versus commercial road maintenance is going to be a covenant applied to that to ensure that that is for our, they're going to place a covenant on it themselves to ensure public progress.
Okay.
So that's going to take care of itself.
Yeah.
Did you have any, I know you've been down a couple of times. Is there anything else that you'd like to see focused on in the application?
Just, we've talked about it, but there's the mobile homes, you know, trying to maintain the value. I put, put a bit of money into my house in the last year and I, I don't want to see that no stuff, so. Based on comps and stuff like that, so.
Has that been, has that been a concern that's been brought up by others on that road as well, if it's subdivided, they don't want to see that happen?
Yeah, I mean, right, anyone who could buy it could do whatever to the land, but you know, I, I don't want to see that either, so I won't put in that, that covenant. So is there anything else that you guys see down the road, this is really early on, they've had a chance to review it already, but it's kind of the opportunity to get maybe issues that you see about a location of a property itself out on the table so that he knows when he's developing this plan that he can focus on, so. It's those kind of things that.
Yeah, listen, for me, my, my, I absolutely understand, protect the covenants, again, as far as, so it's square footage of house, unregistered vehicles. But when it gets to what you can and can't do with, sorry, with a kind of a tree or something like that, I just think that's, that's not going to work on its own.
Yeah, who's, who's the same thing, we kind of can't afford to, and I understand why you know that.
Absolutely.
So, uh, but there's a rule we can't work with that, once you start that process, you know, where does it go? So, uh, now this, the, the piece out in the back, this is conveyed to Buck Hill, I don't see what, I guess I missed that first part.
So we're going to take title to that back piece, you know, separate entity, pack close. So we'll have one division within five years.
Okay.
Yeah. Motion to accept. All in favor?
The sketch, I'm sorry, we're going to be setting the sketch plan.
All in favor?
Will you be ready for September eight?
Yes.
Okay, so before you leave, Lord, you're going to have a very long night if you try to do two preliminary reviews. So we need to talk about schedule.
Okay.
Whether you want to send a special meeting in on a off Thursday, uh, if you just want to sit and have a long night. It can make for a long night when you get it to these, and theoretically you're going to have more people that will attend when you get later on to the face.
Yeah.
Very true.
So.
I would like to schedule a, uh, special meeting.
Yeah, I, I said, I, I said that to break that up into the.
Yes.
So.
So we're looking at the eighth theoretically, or the fifteenth, what are you looking at for timeframe preferably?
Uh, the fifteenth, I think there's time for fifteenth this time, so.
I just do now be having preliminary hearing on a, you know, off, not, not typical meeting day, I just wanted, you know, be sure that you're going to have a quorum to be able to discuss this. They can always come in by some.
Right.
Yes. I can't wait to hear the story. Well, I can't wait to hear the story.
So the fifteenth is the sixteenth and I'm up that one. I've got, it's an annual observation, John's supposed to go to that too.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have to do it on a Thursday.
Tuesday the fourteenth.
Is anything else second on Tuesday?
What's the, what's the previous date?
So the Thursday the ninth is our regular meeting. And then the sixteenth, John and I have a training in Portland. It doesn't start, it starts at six o'clock. So we could go to the fourteenth, Tuesday the fourteenth.
My Tuesday is clear.
Yeah, Tuesday the fourteenth is clear.
Six o'clock? As soon as we get preliminary data from you, we'll get the agenda out.
Great.
A little from the line of agreeing the same. And I'll post the date anyway. You can only pull back if you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to vote on scheduling a special meeting? Just to make it official?
Sure.
Okay. I make a motion to schedule a special meeting with the, with the Main Woods and Waters LLP subdivision for Tuesday, September fourteenth at six P M.
Second.
All in favor? I'm just following this technology.
Okay. Good day. April eighth, was that the last time we met?
Are we at our minutes? I can't read.
It must be.
You were going to, you are. July eighth, the fourth, fifth day. But those are the right of the dates, bro.
Okay, so just change Joe, April to July. But these are the right minutes, okay.
More things to special. And the special number.
We need a motion on minutes and seconds.
Minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
There you go. Motion to accept minutes, seconds.
Did you make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
The next thing on the agenda would be discussion of ordinance about limiting scrolling or flashing signs in the town of Oregon.
It's all right, but I'm just trying to, so we're going to discuss the, the, the current ordinance that we have?
We don't have one.
Oh, we don't have one?
I think the only thing we have is then the site plan review.
Okay, the site plan review, it's okay, yeah, this is talk about science, okay, yes.
So, but we don't have one that's just about sign.
And I think in, in that whole thing, it, it's adopted in Oregon that a sign can change every two seconds. Just like I think Madison. Okay, um, where the state requirement is like every twenty seconds. And if you remember back in nineteen eighty, we voted out billboards and all that kind of stuff, we didn't want all this coming into main. Well, in the last few years, you started seeing all these electronic signs everywhere and they are kind of obnoxious. That one, we have presently in town. In the middle of a five-way intersection. Not supposed to do any texting and all that kind of stuff while you're driving, but yeah, you're supposed to read, a scrolling sign. Okay, in the middle of a five-way, very busy intersection with flashing light stop signs and five of the busiest stores in town. I, I just think we should be able to limit these kind of things coming, you know, to the town of Oregon.
From the side that you're talking about, who, who owns, who lists it? Like, is it the town itself?
That owns the one that's in town right now and there's huge complaints for putting another one at the grade school. I mean, I am dead set against that because I mean, somebody could be reading the sign and run over a kid, because there's kids crossing that road all the time.
Maybe clarifying, who, the way that the sign come from?
Down first, there were state funds.
It's a state, so state reimburses. Thanks again.
Bear in mind that we will have to create an ordinance.
It will be approved by the town.
Yes, but we would have to.
And I'm not looking for any, anything other than these lighted signs with a message that's changing or, I mean, I don't know if you're familiar with going into Scally and then all of a sudden that light will change, you're right there by West Prime Street Market, is that it? And that absolutely freaks me out to the point where I started going around that time. Okay? Because it all of a sudden flashed blue or something like that, and you look, is, do the cop just turn on the lights?
Yeah.
Okay? And I'm not the only one.
So, so before we go down this road, where, even the background, some new town government, the background behind that sign, so what did it, it was paid for by the state?
It was always a letterboard sign there.
Right. So one in town, North Walk or whatever.
And you just had the replaceable letters.
Okay.
And as long as I'm, before I was here, the goal was that, that there were a group of folks that wanted to see an electronic sign downtown.
Okay.
And so when COVID money became available, you saved at all the schools too, that's what everybody put in for. And just rather went out there and changed it. Message board. And had the one message than this allowed you the cycle of it all.
To your knowledge, a lot of towns took advantage of that, I know Mercer has an electronic sign.
Yeah, I gave it my great application.
Yeah, so, yeah, that was the thing, it was it seemed like everyone got their signs at about the same time, so I wondered aloud, not to be a conspiracy theorist, but it's just whatever, you know, a government thing, trying to make sure they get the right message out to everybody, so.
That's exactly what was used in order to get them.
Right. So, whether it's a safety thing or whether it's a, you know, I agree, yeah. So, but it sounds like we have to make a ordinance, I guess.
Yes.
We would, we would have to make a ordinance to prevent that being various, but it.
But.
If, if, if that's the way we want to go, if we feel like it's a menace.
Is, has there been feedback before, before we go and say that, which is what, we have, we have to look at, like, what is, what?
What my suggestion is, go out there and talk to the town people. And see their opinion, I mean, I haven't met anybody that's actually in favor of it yet. They don't like it, that one sign, and to continue putting these things up and having every business going down through town with these signs on there, you know, these electronic signs, that are gonna stick up in front of churches just like in Madison or any place else, I mean, we don't want, personally, I don't think the town in Norwalk wants our Main Street that are with electronic signs like Las Vegas. I'll say it.
Don't get scalping.
Any any discussion from?
I'll have, I'll have some eventually, I'm formulating here, so.
Yeah, like, I, I think before we even go root of talking about whether or not we need ordinance about this in the way in town, we gotta find out what the people in town, let's crack one of us before we come to any clue, whether it's a public hearing, whether there's some kind of public feedback questionnaire that goes out, what that looks like, I don't know, but before we make that decision about this, this block of state funds, you know, it's not just our town, there's a lot of these towns across town that have done this, we just have to make sure that there's some kind of, what was the public want in terms of the overall, we have to have, I would think three months or four months feedback here, if you have time to get the feedback in, or there's some kind of online forum combined with something sent out to get about this before we even approach writing, writing a.
And I'm called for getting public opinion.
So.
Okay. That's just my thing, I I'm not a big fan of it, I was old enough to vote it, as a matter of fact, it was my first year I was able to vote when we voted out the billboards, I traveled the United States and I, there's nothing any worse than billboards.
Right.
Okay, and do we want all of these electronic billboards coming into Norwalk? I mean, and like I said, over by the grade school, that can cause a kid to be run over.
Where, where would it, have you put one in at the grade school? Yeah, there's, there's our plan.
There's been discussion about a second location.
Okay.
Whether it's on town property or school property, it's not been determined.
Okay.
Town doesn't have funding to do anything. But, you know, you see most of the public schools, they're proper enough.
Correct, now, if it's just the North Walk schools, you know, in town, North Walk, that's what's good. Or is it, that's eighty fifty four, you're talking, talking, if it's district funding, it's gonna pay for it, it's something outside of our town.
So, probably gonna be within the spending scope, I would think, of the superintendent.
Okay.
And then they would have to get approval from D O T, because it's a state roof, which the town did when we installed downtown. They, I had to call D O T, make sure that it's outside of their right of way, and they went through all the safety checks, actually had to come up and do a field visit.
Okay.
So what? What procedure does anybody think would be the best way of getting a comprehensive public opinion?
I mean, you talked about sending something out to the town, that cost the town.
The only way you can do it virtually no cost is to do it, keep it online, and do a Google form survey, and post it, and push it. And require people to give you an email address so that you don't hurt the same people.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Except for also.
Okay.
But that would be. Um.
I see, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you have something like that, and John and I have been talking about this for three or four months at least, and I say, I don't get a call when things are going really well, but I do get a call when something's going wrong, and so he's the only caller I've ever got, but, but he's passionate about it, and so that's why we can't talk about it.
I'm looking at, once somebody dies, there's no going back. Okay, you can't bring him back from grave. And, and I mean, I, I just foresee somebody looking at the sign or reading it and being in an accident, I mean, texting and driving.
So if the town in North Walk though, the town's got the town in North Walk, a lot of electronic signs that say information that school wouldn't need this day. This girl is the town planning wouldn't need this day, right? Okay, where would possibly be that a location that you would think would be safer in terms of, because you're right, there's this intersection right on right there. You know, but is there other possible locations, we can talk about that over the front of the old entry school, you know, the people pass, so.
And, and I didn't have an issue with, like, over at the baseball field, you know, putting up the sign, you know, the rabies clinic or anything like that, or the billboard that was there, where they changed it every couple months or whatever it was. But the, the reading a scrolling sign is more like texting, okay? And what I call it, eye candy, you know, it's gonna draw your attention. Okay? And, and the minute you take your eye off the road, especially in someplace like that where you got people, I mean, people that are not, never been through the town in Norwalk, and they don't know which way the traffic's actually supposed to be going, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just a stop sign on the bottom hill.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
You know, people constantly coming down off that hill and thinking that's going through.
So, so I get, I mean, it's always been a sign there anyway that people would look at, and I understand that's a concern about that, I, but I mean, you, you, it's gonna be a process to get that, I mean, how many people are there know the check or, you know, for this survey, it's out there, you have to put that on like certainly monkey or something like that, so. Three months, especially before the survey. So that on Facebook is something like that, that people.
Yeah, you link to Facebook, put it on the webpage, you got a fifty person agenda blast, so like the site forty minutes, okay, and that's what we do.
Okay.
Um. Notices at the post office or, you know, anything about something like that, or mailing list for the a broad spectrum of people's opinion.
Right, as soon as you give them a mailing list, so, you incur costs, right? You know, so we just have to consider that in terms of, of cost incurred in terms of mailing lists, so.
There wouldn't have to be a public hearing, but not until the ordinance is written. So, that's a little bit late.
So I, I can just, I'm just thinking out loud a little bit, so if you, if we solicit feedback on, you know, on electronic signs. So we'd probably have to set some type of a criteria, we need so many, you know, is it, how many, what's, what's the number, how many, how many, before we, before we consider drafting an ordinance? How much feedback or how much, how many people, how many do we need out of town?
Signatures for a petition.
Oh, or a hundred and forty six right now? What was this? Put it on the sign.
Amber, what do you think of me?
For Facebook and vote. You like this stuff?
Do you want us to, what else?
So something, so yeah, so we, the town is considering a sign ordinance, we need your feedback. You know, it's, I think you keep it broad, you don't just say, I'm looking for the notes, you say, we're, we're, the town is considering an ordinance for electronic signs, we need your feedback, and let's see what we get. And do it again, I'm, I'm, with that, I think you're right, just as, you know, as reasonable as possible, no, you know, as far as cost.
Right.
But just trying to get, and then, oh, we have to determine, again, what's the numbers, a hundred and forty six is a ten, is a. Right, it's only if you get feedback from ninety people, right, you know, I mean, you know, you're, you're asking, it's six months, it's already paid for, it's already state fund, it's already placed.
So you can't remove, you can't remove the sign. Any sign that's already there, it's gonna be grandfathered, you can control the cycle on it.
Okay.
So you could say, okay, you can only have one message on there.
Or one message every twenty five seconds, this is definitely right, yeah, so, the state, yeah, the, the state has, if I remember right, at one point, what, there is a a minimum time.
You have twenty seconds on the state.
I think it was three.
Twenty seconds.
Ten seconds for some side off.
So. And right now, the town in North Walk is at three seconds.
We're at ten.
Ten.
I can pull up, I'm, I'm brings off my computer, so I set the time. It's gonna update it then.
Right, so, okay. So twenty seconds is the minimum according to the state?
The state says that if you don't have an ordinance or anything that changes anything, that this is what you go by.
Okay, so that takes care of your unorganized and things like that. Okay.
Well. I think we should have at least as many opinions on this as we would have on a petition. It seems, I mean, petitions are basically public opinions, do you want this to happen, sign our petition?
But I, I think the petition would, would require like a hundred and forty six signatures.
And that, that's what I'm saying, is that even if we go online to do this, we should get at least that many opinions in order to act on it one way or another.
Right, I think it's pushing to get that many people to.
Well, there's, there's two, there's two thoughts to this, to having done online work like that before, survey stuff, and having been involved other stuff, official wildlife and state things, that's, that's volunteer. You gotta make sure that when your surveys go out with this stuff, it's not something where you just ask for an open opinion, someone could be like, you know, well, I'm turning, like, this, you know, it'll be well, you know, you wanna have it, so it's gotta be this thing is, when there's some kind of survey or public piece about, it's very yes or no, it's very, something where you can very easily tally some kind of a public, you know, three or four questions that are very clear cut, you know, it's, otherwise, it just becomes a, a man.
Yeah.
So.
How about setting a, like a sixty day thing, you know, for a survey? I mean, um.
Ninety day window?
Yeah. I mean, getting a hundred and forty six people to comment on it's gonna be tough.
Double advocate, but I think what Charlie was getting at is that when you put a petition out there, it's gonna be a hundred and forty people of the same process. This is just a hundred and forty people total, that, okay, we would like to voice our opinion about this one subject.
I answer, no.
If, if you, if you can't take the time to either fill out a half page form here at the office or go online, then is it something that the town, the board should be spending its time on, the town is sending its resources, because then we have to get K V cog in, and they're gonna vet the ordinance, and it costs money. And if you only got twenty people that care enough to click on, you know, we've had probably fifty people click on immediately today, so if we can't get fifty people to click on a survey, take four questions, then, you know, it might have.
Is it worth, yeah, worth the investment, in terms of, maybe some things we can do within framework of, it's just certain slopes, roll speed, you know, the difference of color, flash, whatever, but, you know, I mean, these things are pretty much everywhere, you know, at this point.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's pretty much everywhere, you know, and I understand the woman out in front of the school, you know, the concern with children, you know, but the children. People cross that, crosswalk. Also, one of them, right? Yeah, I, I appreciate your passion and concern, and I, I'm with you, I, I'm with Charlie, but I think we need to, I think it's a great number, just, let's get out, you know, if we don't, in ninety days, if we don't get a hundred, we need a hundred and forty six opinions for us to consider an ordinance, yeah, I think that's, that's a great starting point, you know?
Okay. Do we agree on that, do you wanna make that a motion?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I'd be a motion that we, we, and I don't know, I'd say we, but, you know, I, you know, a survey gets generated surrounding popular, the consideration of a sign ordinance for Norwalk. I would say digital. Did you? You should put the job. Thank you, you helped me with the part, but how are we doing?
Well, it's gonna be all of us who will be responsible, so the more input, the better.
You're gonna open that point for discussion before you vote on it?
Probably.
Yeah.
I just got one.
Soon, we're probably.
All right, um. Is it ninety days and a hundred and forty six?
That, that sounds fairly reasonable.
Or ninety days or a hundred and forty six signatures, whichever comes first.
I would limit to one forty six, I think that's, that's just our threshold to consider. We can keep it out as long as nobody wants, I'm, ninety days, that's, that sounds, almost sounds too long, but I, you know.
Not really, not, no. I'm gonna second, yes.
So, the special?
So how many, how many residents, voting residents in the town of Norwalk? Ballpark.
Uh, twenty eight hundred.
So we've got a hundred and forty six, sorry, a hundred and forty six that signed a petition, that they don't like the sign downtown. So in your survey that you're gonna construct, you know, can there be an option in there, hey, I'd love to see a digital sign downtown? I'm, I'm in favor of it, we've tried to get it for ten years down there, it's there, if we need to regulate the cycle, if we need to regulate the color, if we need to regulate the message, but I would like to see in this survey, you know, if.
But I would like to see in this survey, you know, if, if you're a resident of the town in Norwalk, you wanna see it there. Now, so you're talking about a hundred and forty-six person threshold. Would that be, I'm in favor, I'm not in favor? You know, I don't think we need an ordinance, I think this is something that can be handled by addressing it with the town manager and fixing a cycle or a color. Or Route Two is highly regulated by the Department of Transportation. Correct. National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has spent billions on surveys to try to figure out crash data. You know, this is a Route Two corridor, it's highly regulated already. I don't know, I kinda like it, maybe the cycle, I'd like to see some crash data, you know, have we had any increasing crashes since the sign's been there? Something that might happen someday, you know? How, how long is that digital sign?
About twelve months.
It's about zero. And what was the cost on that? Three thousand six? Yeah.
Twelve?
Was it really? Yeah.
Oh my god.
It was expensive.
Well, the top is illuminated and...
So going back to my, my main point was in your survey, when you construct it, can there be or consider an option of, hey, it's not offensive to me, I like to say it's a day.
Does a person prove it, yeah?
And is that, is that part of your one forty-six threshold or does that person who says, I love it, now take away one of those one forty-six, you know? You're looking for a hundred and forty-six total responses, a hundred and forty-six
I, I think a hundred and forty-six total.
Right.
At the minimum.
So then, that's, it's advantageous for me not to respond to your survey if I don't want this ordinance, is what you're telling me?
No, because I just, that's part of consideration, that's not, we're not, so in other words, we're not gonna even consider an ordinance unless we get at least one forty-six. So it's only a consideration, we're still not...
So I don't want you to consider it, so I'm not gonna respond to your survey.
Okay.
I guess is my point.
You should respond and tell if you don't want an ordinance.
Well, no, because that's gonna put it in front of you to perhaps create an ordinance if I boost your numbers.
Say if somebody runs around, tell everybody it's all...
I'll be right back.
I see what you're saying. I think those mannequins down there catch my attention more than sign does.
Somebody was telling me the other day, they slam their brakes on all the time if they think somebody's...
I catch that corner of my eye going around there. I don't even look at the sign anymore, I just look to see what's down there.
And they move.
They move.
But somebody could be reading the sign while somebody else slams their brakes on because of those people, those dummies there.
But has it, but has it happened? It could happen, but has it happened?
Okay, it's only been twelve months.
Right.
I don't, I think that truck, that truck, they've been a while, just was reading the sign.
And, and the thing is, when it does happen, because it will eventually happen, somebody could die. Then, then where are you at? I mean...
We could run over the man.
We could get struck by lightning tonight, burn the building down.
I'm just looking that, I mean, we just want to say somebody dies just like our neighbor, he's involuntary manslaughter, I mean, driving a car. Took his eyes.
Michael, what's going on at Rebecca Street?
I had a scheduling conflict, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting.
No, the pump station, nobody is suing us back now.
That's a little bit of government. You're in the DM, we're all...
I'm cheering.
I don't, I don't blame it, I don't even know.
I'll work to develop a short and smooth survey. Are you a resident, yes or no? Do you like the sign downtown? Yes or no? Would you be in favor of
A sign ordinance?
Digital sign ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes, you're right.
Um, sure, would it be also possible to put out like a, a paper thing that just somebody will just don't do for my...
I can pull up, I'll shoot here. Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Um, that they can fill out, basically.
Where would you, I'm trying to like, where would you what was, where, where would you have that as a place for people to get that though?
It would be here.
It would be here, how often can you see what they command, basically, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Would there be any other question, I mean, that gets to the point of what we're looking for.
Yeah, and I think, I think that hopefully the town people will trust that if we have a hundred and forty-six that come in and say, you know, yes, we like signs, no, we don't want an ordinance, that we as a board won't go through it, just because we can, we want people to do it like this. You know, I just, we need the threshold, that's all, I thought I was...
I'll vote on your survey.
I think we're all snorting to look at something like that and figure it out. Okay, you want to take a vote on the last motion that Mike made about doing a survey?
All in favor of doing a survey? All opposed?
All right. Other business.
Is there any other business that you brought up?
None.
None, yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn at sixteen minutes past seven.
Yeah. Second time.
All in favor?